Give the thumbs up. We good? Thank you.
Good morning. The adequate notice of this regular meeting is required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on September twenty seventh and October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This notice was on those dates posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, and Tappan Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will call the roll. Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Croson. Mr. Desay. Mrs. DiMaggio. Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Valentino.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Brzee.
Here.
We have a quorum. Chapter fifty-three requires boards of education to permit the public to comment on any changes or amendments to certain administrative contracts as they are renewed. Today, we are permitting public comment on the proposed contract of our superintendent of schools, Dr. Mingle. The board will be voting to approve a new contract for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven. The public was invited to review this contract at the Board of Education Office. At this time, I will open up the floor, both in person and remote, to public commentary. If there's anyone who wishes to provide public comments, if you could kindly state your name and address, and the board would be appreciative of your feedback. Yes, sir. Can we get, do you mind if we give your microphone to? Thank you.
Seven AM, it seems like the only time we could find to do this. We have gotten no information on why this is so such a necessity, a necessity that is now eight days or ten days before Election Day. A necessity for why, a contract that runs currently until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, which, by the way, only exists because we extended a contract in, on July first of two thousand and twenty, which was already in the middle of a contract. You know, if, if, if I was a baseball player, I'd have to wait at least until my contract was over before I got to renegotiate. So I'm trying to understand the impetus for this. It couldn't, it couldn't obviously be the board, because the board has a contract. We, we, you guys approved it, we all approved it. It's in place, so why is Dr. Mingle forcing the board's hand to renegotiate a contract two and a half years on a seven AM on a Friday, ahead of Election Day, when there are three board seats that are going to be open? I think we deserve answers for that. I took a look at both contracts. The only substantive change is a ninety-day notice period instead of a hundred and fifty-day notice period for Dr. Mingle to leave us. But let's be real, the compensation is more than fair, and I noticed he didn't put the table that we saw at the board offices yesterday. But when you include the tuition compensation, when you include the unused vacation days, which I'm sure Dr. Mingle makes sure he takes no vacation days so we can carry forward, you're talking about forty-something thousand dollars in unused vacation days, fifteen thousand dollars in, in sick days every year, and another twenty-something thousand dollars in tuition. It's over three hundred thousand dollars per year for this contract. I don't think the public knows about this, and I really think we deserve an answer as to why we're being asked and why you're voting on this two and a half years, more than two and a half years before expiration. And if it's because Dr. Mingle has threatened to leave if he doesn't get a contract renewed, I think we deserve to know that as well. And if there's some concern that there's no qualified superintendents anywhere in this tri-state area or nationally, I think I find that hard to believe. There are probably principals and others that run much larger schools than the entire Warren School District that would be more than happy to take three hundred thousand dollars a year to run Warren schools. And I could certainly help you find headhunters who could do it if you want to ask me to do it. So stop treating us like we're idiots. Stop treating us like, like you throw this meeting at, at, at seven AM to try to get the least amount of turnout. Stop doing this ahead of an election. This is just really upsetting to me that you, that you would think that you could treat the public like this.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Yes, sir, in back, if you would not mind going to the podium.
I'm Timothy Connolly. Three Timothy Connolly, three Firetuck Court, Warren, New Jersey. The proud parents of two children in our district. Sorry, I had to write down my statement, because, you know, I'm not an early person, and normally at this time, I'm busy getting my kids ready for school, much like the rest of the parents in Warren, which begs to ask, as Mr. Silver just said, why is this vote to extend Dr. Mingle's contract to two thousand and twenty-seven being held at seven AM on a Friday morning? There are two more years left on his contract. What is the rush? What is the urgency of this vote? Why now? Why today? Mr. Brzee, I find it extremely inconvenient of this time at seven AM for your constituents, all of which are parents, that they cannot comment on the contract renewal. I'll submit to you that this, the reason is that you do not hear from the parents, you will not have any reason to vote no. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to review the contract in person, given the notice period provided, so I cannot speak about the details of what the contract are. So I can only comment about this process, and because it's extremely suspicious of the timing. I'm left to wonder, Mr. Brzee, why now? And what is in the contract, and what are the circumstances surrounding the renewal that forces it to be rushed today at seven AM? Who on this board negotiated this proposed new contract? What are the circumstances in those negotiations? And how, why is this coming up so early for renewal? Did Dr. Mingle threaten to leave the district if he was not renewed early? If you're proud of the circumstances surrounding the renewal of this contract, why have this essential vote in secret at the most inconvenient time possible? By scheduling this vote at seven AM, when all the parents in the district are busy getting their kids ready, suggests something is not right. With two years left on the contract, we have plenty of time to ensure there's transparency in this process. There's zero rush to vote today. If you vote no today, and as a result of that vote, Dr. Mingle decides to leave this district, so be it. There are five hundred other districts in this state, and I'm sure there are many highly capable superintendents who would be very honored to serve in the Warren Township Board of Education. Maybe I'm wrong, but your actions today, by holding this vote at seven AM, lead me to believe that otherwise. At best, you're out of touch with the residents of Warren, and at worst, you're hiding something. I implore those that are here, unfortunately, probably they're stuck at seven AM at home with their children, too. I implore each and every one of you to vote no solely because the vote at this hour is wrong, is the wrong way to go about renewing a contract for the top leadership position in our district. Extending this contract at this time will be bad for the district, because democracy dies in darkness. We deserve transparency.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please.
Morning, Stephen Tor, Stephen Tor, twelve Nottingham Way. I, uh, I do agree with the seven AM, and it seems like the board are not morning people, but thanks for those of you that could make it. So I first of all actually wanted to thank you, Dr. Mingle. I have a slightly different view of the world, which is I think you've done an outstanding job. Certainly, my children are benefiting hugely from the education they're getting in this school district. I would probably remind the board as well that, that this school district's in the top ten nationally, which means there are forty-five million American kids who are not benefiting from the education that our children are getting in this school district. And I'm really not surprised. That doesn't tend to happen by accident. It generally happens for a myriad reasons, but not least the leadership that Dr. Mingle and his administration provide. I would also suggest that there's probably a silent majority of both voters and parents who feel the same way, and are going to be, I would think, somewhat dismayed if the board were to decide to undermine an outstanding school district by voting no on this. So I don't know the, I don't know the ins and outs of timing and elections and all the other bits and pieces. But, but as I say, I do think there's a large majority of people who are not here and don't often turn up to these meetings, who would be somewhat surprised if this goes in a different direction today, and I hope you will do the right thing and not, and not vote no. And by the way, if you want to adjust it and make it a ten-year term, I'm okay with that as well. So thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Big hand up. Yes, please.
Heather Silver Quell Run. I normally prepare an entire speech, but today you're just going to get a list of questions that won't get answered, while one of my children sits outside in the hallway so that he didn't miss getting to school, and the other one stood in the dark waiting for the bus. Why is there such a rush, and why can't the existing contract run its course, continuation determined then? How does the current contract compare to other superintendents in our state, taking into consideration district size, grades encompassed, and support staff provided? What has increased or bettered in our district over the last five years that is a direct cause of the implementation of programming or curriculum by our superintendent? I can actually answer that one. SEL, DEI, and CRT curriculums. And it would have been the health curriculum had a few of our board members been brave enough to say no. We all know it definitely isn't test scores, our ranking in the state, in any of our schools, extracurricular enrichment for all at every school, and out-of-classroom learning experiences. They've all been removed. How can you justify scores continuing to drop in our district over the last six years without any accountability the person supposedly paid to better them? And has our town expressed discontent with the county or the state in the yearly changing of these assessments, allowing for no effective or useful data collection, and we can't continue to use COVID? What is it that we think will benefit by changing the current contract that a new hire with fresh ideas and understanding of their position and their role couldn't do? And what is it that is done that makes our superintendent so special, seemingly irreplaceable, or the Messiah? Why is this the second time it's necessary to alter an existing contract, aside from increasing it? Why did you choose to share it publicly this time rather than behind closed doors last time when it was done, also ahead of the scheduled change? How come for the first time in over a decade of watching and attending Board of Ed meetings, was the board lawyer suddenly present at the table for the potential passing of a new health curriculum? Might it have been so that if anyone that didn't want to agree was shamed, threatened, or scared not to agree? Amazing how many other districts didn't pass it also, but yet our superintendent felt that whatever Trenton tells him to do is right. An open mind and free speech is still something that is part of our constitution and should be part of our public education system. And why would you want to keep someone employed who clearly has interest to be somewhere else? There is not that many great districts in New Jersey, and no matter how great our education system is supposed to be, so this should be a pretty sweet deal to come work in Warren. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please, the front row, if you could, and then we'll go to you in this tail.
Olivia Spingarn, Olivia Spingarn, three Skyline Drive. I'd like to thank Dr. Mingle for his tremendous contribution to our school district, highlighting one of the many contributions he's brought with the whole child approach to education, an approach to learning that our family deeply appreciates and benefits from. I'd like to express to the board my support of renewing Dr. Mingle's contract. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This is Taylor.
Good morning, Ayanna Taylor, twenty-one Highmount Avenue. So I, I first have to say that as a board member, when I was a board member, I did not approve any CRT curriculum, and that comment, I think, reflects a gross misunderstanding of CRT and curriculum. So Mark, Lisa, David, and Patricia, we served together during what was likely one of the most challenging times that this district has seen. It was a test of everyone's leadership, and we watched Dr. Mingle lead through crisis in the midst of open and at times virulent hostility from parents in this community. He did it with the same attention to detail, command of the facts, thoughtfulness, and care for our children as we did when we were debating whether to buy new furniture for classrooms. Mr. Croson, I don't see him here on board, but he called me. You called me when you first moved to town to get my insight as a former member of the Warren Township.
If you could, I'm sorry to interrupt, if you could, sorry, address comments to myself, it's just policy. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And we both have very similar experiences in school. And so we know what an ineffective school leader looks like and what an effective one looks like. And Dr. Mingle, we know, is one of the most effective district leaders we've encountered. And that's why I'm here to lend my voice in support of the extension and increase of Dr. Mingle's contract. I hope that you all are not distracted by the loud voices and the hostile voices, because they absolutely do not represent the majority. I know firsthand that it's hard, but their goal is to bully you into making the decisions that they want and not the ones that are necessarily best for the district. Effective leaders aren't the ones who always tell you what you want to hear. They are grounded, steady, smart, accept feedback and critique, and use it to grow and create and advocate for the conditions that allow their teams to do their best work. And we've all watched Dr. Mingle do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Yes, please.
Rachel Singleton, twenty-two, Dewa Trail West. I'd just like to know why the contract is being extended in that I don't see the point in extending it for five years, because we've just renewed it from in two thousand and twenty-four to go to two thousand and twenty-five, but we're two years in and we're renewing it again. So I do wonder if it's the right thing for Dr. Mingle and the board and the town of Warren to actually write it for that length of time, because we're back here two years after the last renegotiation. So somebody suggested maybe ten years. Well, that's possibly too long, because we're here again two years later. So I just wonder if the term is the right term, because everyone has to forge their own career, and learnings have to be learned in the job that you're doing, and personal development is important. So is the term correct? Is, is that the right decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Any additional comments? Yes, please. After, there's one going right now, and then we'll go to you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Andrews, and I am representing the Warren Township Education Association. I am also a teacher at Woodland and ALT School. I just wanted to start off that Dr. Mingle has been a very strong leader during his eight years at Warren Township. Throughout his tenure, one thing he has always been has been transparent. The decisions that are made have never been done in haste, but have always been examined and weighed across all avenues. This couldn't have been truer than when he led our community through a global pandemic. It was an impossible task, and in no way was everyone going to be happy with the decisions. But Dr. Mingle drove all of the decisions around one common goal, and that was to return to school safely for the entire community. And we did do just that. Now, don't get me wrong, we don't always agree on everything, but whenever that does happen, we are able to find a common ground, and we are able to collaborate. And the decisions that are made have always been fair. One thing is certain, Dr. Mingle has always had the students, staff, and community of Warren in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Rachel.
So good morning, everyone, and it's a bit, it's a bit too early for me, okay? So I-
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Vaishali Ambekar, eight Orchard.
Thank you.
I haven't written down much, but I have a few points. First off, I'm not commenting on Dr. Mingle's policies or strategies. There are things people will like, people won't like. I mean, that's irrespective. Here I am as a taxpayer and as a parent. And as a taxpayer, I just have a few questions. And the first one is that there is a reason that a contract is implemented always. What would have happened if Warren District would have decided to renegotiate the contract? Would that have been acceptable? And would that have got enough popularity in the first place? The second thing is I do want to talk about, I mean, everybody should go in for higher education, and I'm glad Dr. Mingle is doing that. But from what I understand, okay, I may be wrong again, because, I mean, people have been saying things that are transparent, but by the time it reaches me, it would have had a different effect. So from what I understand, Dr. Mingle does, is studying further, studying, getting his law degree, and that is at the cost of Warren Township. The impact is twofold. One is, of course, somebody with a higher education is going to affect us, and it's going to be for a positive thing. That's what I'm assuming Warren District decided. But what happens is when somebody's studying at the job, they tend to increase their team, which we have all seen. The increase of the team again impacts me as a taxpayer. And I, I feel more hurt, because we haven't grown. The district hasn't grown substantially to increase, to talk about more number of people being employed. And today, more number of people are getting employed at the township office, because what I feel is an impact of somebody else studying. So as a taxpayer, this affects me definitely, yes, and rest, I think most of them have covered. And once again, I'm not questioning how the superintendent out here works or what it is. And lastly, if Warren Township does feel that they need to hire somebody else, yes, I am a headhunter. I can help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Sophie Bappett. I live at One Safford Way in Warren. I am currently a seventh grader at Warren Middle School. I've been in this district ever since preschool. On October eighteenth, I was in gym class, and we were playing co-ed soccer and with mixed skill sets. While every soccer team, club, rec, travel, et cetera, has a mandatory requirement to wear protective gear while playing soccer, including our boys and girls soccer team here at Warren Middle School. The same game is played in gym class does not require or provide protective gear. The danger of the game played in school is worse than any after-school organization, because we are all thrown together with various skill sets and heightened competition without anything protecting us. During COVID, we were mandated to wear masks to protect each other from getting each other sick. While we were annoyed and uncomfortable, we still felt appreciated for you looking out for us and our health. I have had COVID in the past, and it wasn't fun, but the masks that we were mandated to wear did not stop me from getting COVID. However, I understand that it was a pandemic, and you were using whatever protective device is to keep us safe. The point is, we are sent out onto a field unprotected, where the risk of getting seriously hurt is very high. My pediatrician was informed that this happened. She wanted to know why I was sent out to play a game that is so dangerous. When she wrote a doctor's note at the beginning of the year saying that I had a scholodys. I never would have signed up for soccer if I had known this would have been, been the end result. I'm not here just to advocate for myself. I don't, I am also here to advocate for my fellow classmates, so they don't have to go through the pain that I'm currently going through. I respectfully would like to ask the board to mandate that shin guards be worn during gym soccer. And if any of the students were unable to afford them, they would be provided by the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the room? Is there anyone online on Zoom? If you could kindly use the raise your hand feature while we're waiting for that, please go ahead. We'll do more in the room here.
Hello, good morning. Jen Sands, Hill Hollow Road, Warren. I'm here in support of doctors, Dr. M, Mr. Mingle's contract renewal. With my two boys being in the school district from elementary, middle school to high school, we've just seen the amazing work and management that Mr. Mingle has provided and communication. And, you know, this being here has been, you know, one of the great things about being in Warren and seeing how nurtured and supported our children are in school, and having the communication that we do has been amazing. And even, you know, working with the teachers and, and everybody in the school. So I think it's, you know, it's a matter of leadership and communication. And as a parent, as a mother, I, I am supportive of the contract renewal. The time is inconvenient, yes. You know, the, the, the system, the way this is being done, it's not a great, you know, of convenience, and would like to have, you know, more transparency into why it's happening this way. But the bottom line is whether I, me as a parent, I want Mr. Mingle to be around until all my kids at least are done with high school, and whether I want the same for other children. Yes, I want that, and he deserves to have salary increases. He deserves to have job security. We do that, and he deserves to be able to continue his higher education. We have that in the corporate world as well all the time, and he deserves our support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please. Yep.
Peter Doss, thirty-nine Elsworth Drive. Good morning. I'd like to speak in support of the steady, measured, and effective leadership exhibited by Dr. Mingle. Dr. Mingle has been a calm and reasoned presence on our school board. His professionalism has impressed me every time that I have had the pleasure of hearing him speak. He is the prototype of the kind of local leader that we need to strengthen and uphold during these times of contention and inflamed passions. Thank you, Dr. Mingle, and my hope is that the school board's decisions support Dr. Mingle's continued leadership of our school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please.
Jennifer Starr, sixteen, Knoll Crest Road, Bedminster. I'm Sophie's mom, and couldn't be more proud of her for standing up here today and advocating for herself and for her classmates. And as a parent, I'm sure you could imagine how upsetting it is to pick your child up from school and to find this when it could have been easily avoided, had the parents received the same permission slips and notifications that they would be playing contact sports and to sign that you are approving that they're playing these things. And had I known she wasn't going to be protected, especially when there was a doctor's note at the beginning of the year given that she has a problem with her knees. it's just unconscionable. And so as Sophie's advocating for her classmates to receive the protective gear that they deserve, as a parent, I'm requesting that if my child is going to be put into a situation where she could be hurt, I know about it, and I have a choice of whether or not I want her to sign up for it. I think soccer's great. I think the kids learn competition. I think it's great. But I don't think that there is enough supervision or protection for them. On another note, I know we're talking about Mr. Mingle and his contract and his continuing education. And as a teacher and a recruiter, I am a huge advocate of people being able to continue to grow in their career and have professional development. And while some people feel that early career education in this age group is not appropriate, we had a very strong pillar in the community who's unfortunately no longer with us, who did believe that. And Mr. Cook, I love that you supported that in the elementary school. And I'm asking the board, if maybe there is extra funding, we could think about career night. We could think about giving these kids field trips and experiences that they can look towards their future and their profession and any nutritious and delicious exposure to career as early as possible. Sign me up. I'm happy to be on board.
Thank you very much. We will go to Mr. Jones on Zoom. If you could unmute.
Hi, I'm Philip Jones. I am a teacher at Mount Horp School. And also the vice president of the Warren Township Education Association. I would like to speak on, in support of Dr. Mingle and renewing his contract. That we've heard a lot at recent board meetings about Trenton's overreach into local situations with boards. To me, the most egregious Trenton overreach was under the Christie administration when they imposed the arbitrary two percent tax cap and also the cap on superintendent salaries. Thankfully, Governor Phil Murphy recently signed a law that undid that cap. So now superintendents are able to earn the money that they deserve. And I fully support any superintendent seeking out the compensation that they deserve for the job well done. Speaking of Dr. Mingle specifically, when he first came to our school district, he did what no superintendent I had ever met had done. And that was to sit down with every staff member who wanted to and ask what they wanted to see in their school district. I told Dr. Mingle back then that I wanted our school district to be a leader and to be the vanguard for progressive education in this area. I think under his leadership, we've made a lot of progress toward that goal. And I think there's still more work to be done, and I think he recognizes that. I hope the board recognizes that. And I know that I fully support him. Many of the staff members that I've talked to also fully support him in the vision that he has for this school district. So I hope that will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We will go to Nicole Gomero. Please unmute.
Hi, good morning. Two-three-four King George Road, oh, Nicole Gomero, two-three-four King George Road. I'm speaking in behalf of supporting Dr. Mingle. You know, I, I think it's really unfortunate that this vilification of teachers and administrators is also infiltrating our town. The idea that teachers and admin shouldn't be pursuing professional growth, renegotiating their contracts. This is something that's done in many industries across the country. You know, people have worth, and they absolutely should be renegotiating their terms when appropriate. And I would also just add that, you know, at the beginning of this year, Mr. Mingle himself shared, you know, some of the challenges that a lot of neighboring school districts had starting out the year with not enough teachers. I think we have been really fortunate in our district that we did not have those same challenges, and I don't think that that is an accident. As we know, teachers are leaving in great rates. And, you know, I know many of them, and it's not because of the kids, it's because of challenges with administration. We're lucky to live in our town where teachers feel supported by Dr. Mingle and the rest of the administration, and I really hope that the board considers that because otherwise, we're going to be finding ourselves. We're going to be finding ourselves in, you know, a pretty tough situation where we're also going to be searching and without the teachers that we need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Alana Goldstein, if you could unmute, please.
Hi, Alana Goldstein, Forty Gates Avenue, Warren, New Jersey. Just want to say that I definitely support Dr. Mingle's contract being renewed. When I was on the board, he was always a sound, smart, calm voice, even when we weren't, when we were disagreeing on things. Other districts in the area have had, have tried to get a, a new administrator. And over and over, we see again that nobody's going to stay because, you know, there are really big challenges as a superintendent. And I think that Dr. Mingle has taken all of those challenges and done amazing and professional work. And we really need to, you know, to think about what, if we don't keep Dr. Mingle, what do we expect to get? Because it's not going to be any better. And also, just want to say that Warren was rated top fifty places to work for teachers. We're on that list, and obviously that says a lot. Thanks. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Matthew Kyle, I apologize if I mispronounced that.
All right. My name is Matthew Keel, One Winding Bridge Way, Warren, New Jersey. I, I've lived here since third grade. I went to Woodland from two thousand five to two thousand eight. Warren Mill from two thousand eight to twenty eleven, and then Washington Hills from twenty eleven to twenty fifteen. So I'm kind of old. First things first, I'm here to show my support for Dr. Mingle to have his contract extended. I think he's been a really great addition to our school district, especially during this very tumultuous time with guard, with the rampant partisanship regarding the, as you may all know, the proposed health curriculum that was shut down. I remember that in one of the prior board meetings, he denounced the letter that was spraying this misinformation about the current and proposed health curriculums. And he called on others to do the same. And I thought that was, that I, I really thought he was really stuck to his do of not being partisan, as all board members should. In our country, our democracy, and especially our educational sys- education system, although everyone has a right to their opinions, we must also value facts and evidence and the truth. And I find it really disturbing how partisan our discussions and discourse regarding these sort of topics, especially regarding our health or our sex ed curriculums have become with no regard for evidence and facts. And I, let me reiterate again that everyone has, is entitled to their opinions. I do not want to judge parents' views on how comfortable they feel regarding the proposed curriculums. Let me just state that right off the bat again. But in my opinion, our kids do not live in a vacuum. And shielding them from these sort of topics, even if they, if some parents may find them a little uncomfortable, isn't feasible. If these kids don't learn about these topics in a health class, they'll learn about it from other sources that may not be as informed or accurate, such as their peers or the media. It may not be as informed or accurate as what they taught in health class. I do not wish, let me just state this again, I do not wish to judge other parents' opinions on whether or not they feel comfortable about this. But I have complete faith in our health teachers and their fact, in our faculty to discuss these topics, even if not everyone feels comfortable about them within age-appropriate environments and formed and active manner. And when I heard that they voted down, when the board voted down the, the health curriculum, froze health curriculum that day, I was worried it would send a message to those health teachers saying, you know, you, you're not capable of doing, you're not capable of doing your jobs and having a health class, having health classes and health teachers is a waste of time. But back to my point, I hope that you vote to extend Dr. Mingle's contract. And I hope that you recognize his dedication and service to our district by doing so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jamie's iPhone is what's listed. If you could kindly unmute, state your name and address, please.
Sure. Jamie Margoli, sixteen, Quill, Penway. I just want to reiterate what some other people have said. I am completely supportive of the extension of Dr. Mingle's contract. I feel we're in really good hands, excellent leadership. And on, on the flip side, I'm worried that if he leaves, we're not going to be happy with the result of, you know, actions from, you know, the potential for others in the administration and teachers who may follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on, if there's anyone else on Zoom, if you could use the raise your hand feature, you can go in the room, you can go ahead. While we wait, you can go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Good morning. Jamal Sad, Hill Hollow Road, Warren. I haven't prepared anything. I'm not like extremely informed about the whole situation, but with two kids in the, in the school system here in Warren, I could not be happier with, with the education they're receiving, with the support, with the communications from the school district. I've been to a few of the board meetings. I can tell Dr. Mingle has extremely, is extremely highly respected in, in the community. And I agree that there's like a small minority, but very loud group that's trying to inject politics into everything in our lives these days and trying to influence schools. And I, I completely disagree with that approach and, and and as for the timing, I mean, like, a lot of people complain about timing. Yeah, it's not convenient, but I mean, I was at a, at a school, at the high school yesterday at seven. That was also not convenient at night. I mean, when is a convenient time? It's, it's, it is what it is. And I just want to say I'm in support of Dr. Mingo's contract extension.
Thank you for your comments. On Zoom, there is a Galad. I'm going to try to get through one circle back.
Hi, my name is Donna, and Donna Gallo. I live on Geets Avenue in Warren. Just to be brief, I am here in support of Dr. Mingle and the renewal of his contract. My children are thriving and well-supported in the school districts, and I know that's a direct reflection of all of his work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Also on Zoom, Sarah Byrne, I believe it says.
Hi, I'm Sarah Byrne. I live at one sixty-seven Mountain View Road in Warren. I have two children at Central School and two children at the middle school. I am right, I'm, I'm in support of Dr. Mingle's contract being renewed because of what I've seen since we moved here in two thousand fifteen. We come from the city, and the experiences that we had there in the school system were such that we wanted our kids to have a different experience. What we are missing here in Warren is the richness of diversity a lot of times and the acceptance and tolerance of people of all different backgrounds. What I appreciate about Dr. Mingle's approach is that that is not tolerated. We are all welcome, and we are all welcome to voice our opinions, even when it differs from his own. I don't agree with a lot of his policy with, specifically with regard to food days or with regards to the attention paid to sports and communication sometimes. But at the end of the day, the most important thing is that my children, all of my children, with four points in a square in terms of how they learn, all of their academic needs and their social emotional needs and growth are being met. If a child is in school, my children or other children, and I know this from being an educator in the city since two thousand and four, if a child's social emotional needs are not being taken care of, if they do not feel stable or secure or safe, they cannot learn. And the implementation of that kind of curriculum where we recognize that coming out of pandemic, children's needs need to be met first in that social emotional way, that is curriculum that has been identified as first and foremost, there is a need there. In terms of keeping our children safe, that is first and foremost, and that has been done under his guidance. So while there are things that I may disagree with in terms of his policy, he is open to discussion, and I think that the attention cared for our kids' academic needs has been at the forefront of his work. So I'm in support of his contract being renewed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will go to Craig Margolis.
Craig Margolis, sixteen, Quill, Penway. Good morning, everybody. To me, this seems like a no-brainer. We have an award-winning superintendent, young administrators who operate as, from a one-voice approach, clear that he has the respect of the principals, the teachers, the administration. I've been so impressed with the way this district works in a coordinated effort from the top down. And it's seen in, in the classroom in terms of the effect on my kids when they go to school counselors, nurses, principals. It's always the same approach. And that, I don't think that people realize that that's not always the case in other districts. Speaking of other districts, we're talking about the dollars here and, you know, the possibilities of what would happen if we were to not renew, or I'm sorry, to extend this contract. So just taking a look at it. Dr. Mingle in two thousand twenty, out of seven hundred and sixty-five superintendents and assistant superintendents, ranked four hundred and fifty-fourth in salary. He's asking for a raise to two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That would not put him on the list of the top twenty-five. It would put him around number forty in the year twenty twenty. Obviously, there's been some inflation since then. And superintendents typically receive a two percent to three percent annual raise. So the cost of replacing Dr. Mingle would probably be two hundred to two hundred forty to two hundred fifty thousand dollars annually, in addition to headhunter fees. And what I think the other piece we're missing here is that our district unfortunately is currently a non-compliance with state law. So that's going to limit the applicant pool. I think there are going to be some people who are hesitant to join this district, given the fact that there is the possibility of punishment from the state. They're not really sure what message they're getting from the board. So I think we, we really need to take a look at we, what we have here and be thankful for it. And I'm concerned that it could be slipping away. So I implore the board to act on this today. Extend Dr. Mingle's contract, continue to give this district the voice at the top that it needs, and continue on, hopefully, continue to avoid this potential path that I see us possibly following down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't want to even pass judgment on Dr. Mingle. This is really not about that. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I, I, I don't want to pass judgment on Dr. Mingle. I think, in, in fact, this, he has two and a half years on a contract. There isn't a question, or it shouldn't be a question of whether or not we're agreeing with the job that he's doing. I guess my issue, and I keep hearing about democracy and silent majorities and other types of things, is we are going to have an election in ten days. And at that, and so I'm, I'm suspicious. I, I keep hearing about transparency from the board, but I don't think we've really gotten a good answer as to why now? Why ten days before an election where a, a, a large percentage of the board perhaps may turn over? Are we renewing a contract in the wee hours of the morning? When there's two and a half years to go? What's the rush? We can address this. Let's have- We can address this. Let's have democracy. Let's have a vote. If, if in fact, the, the position is there's a silent majority that approve of Dr. Mingle and, and for all I know, that is very much the case. And, and I'm again, not passing judgment on his performance. What I'm questioning is, why are we doing this on October twenty eighth ahead of a substantial, a potential substantial change in the board? Wouldn't it be a real, wouldn't democracy really be at the forefront if we let that vote happen? There would still be, at December thirty first, there would still be two and a half years left on Dr. Mingle's contract. We have no risk of losing Dr. Mingle right now. To, to the, to the contrary, he has a contract for two and a half years with a currently a hundred and fifty-day notice period. So unless there's some other things that we haven't been informed about that perhaps he's claimed he's going to go somewhere else, I, I would love to get that level of information from the board as to the sense of urgency that this be passed today rather than passed in January or passed in July of, of two thousand and twenty-three, when there's still two years left on the current contract. I'm not questioning the, the dollars. I looked at both contracts. In fact, it's really starts at the existing level right now. There's no, I, I, and I don't think there's anything objectionable in the contract whatsoever. What I'm questioning is this process by which we're doing this ahead of Election Day. And it seems to me pretty transparent that the reason for this extension is being done ahead of Election Day because the current board, Dr. Mingle and/or both, feel that, that there would be more challenges in renewal after Election Day. But to me, that's stifling democracy, not, you know, going with democracy. And again, if there's this silent majority, I, I really have no idea. Then let people vote. Let people vote in, on November eighth. We'll find out what a new board is, and those people will vote on a new contract for Dr. Mingle. Again, we have an existing one. Baseball players wait until their contracts are up before they get a new contract. I don't understand the urgency. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Please go ahead and state your name.
My name is Jeff Heaney. I'm the proud principal of Woodland School and also the president of the Warren Township Administration Educators Administrators Association. I stand here before you on behalf of the W T A A A in full one hundred percent support of Dr. Mingle's extension of his contract. I have been in education for twenty-five years, and I have never worked for a leader who is more forward-thinking, more collaborative, and has led us through one of the most difficult times in anybody's career in education. Extending his contract puts us in a very good position for our district to continue to move forward in a direction to provide our students with a quality education that Warren is known for. Again, our administration, our association supports Dr. Mingle one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm gonna go one online. I'll get to you, Mrs. Silver. Kevin Brotsby's on Zoom.
Hi, Kevin Brotsby's eight Snyder Road. I just wanted to voice my support for the extension of Dr. Mingle's contract. I didn't realize that we had to negotiate superintendent contracts these days the way that college football coaches negotiate their contracts, but that being said, I think he's done an excellent job, particularly leading us through the COVID times. And I think it's a, a really easy decision to give him the extension. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Silver, please.
Heather Silver, Quail Run, since we're all touting how great we are. I'm the president of the Education Association that was unable to get restarted in all twelve years that I have been in the Warren School District. I am also in the Watchung Hills School District, which many people seem to confuse with the Warren School District. It has a separate Board of Education and it has a separate superintendent. Our superintendent in Warren is the superintendent for a K to eight district, not a K to twelve. I realize that we're probably not going to get any answers because we never do. We speak into a vacuum at these board meetings as we have for all the years that I've come or been online. But as my husband stated and many other people stated, whether you're in support or not in support of Dr. Mingle's actions, why a contract needs to be renegotiated in the middle for a second time when two years ago it was renegotiated again in the middle of a contract? Unfortunately, I don't think enough people come out or pay attention to realize what goes on, which is why some of us do need to be loud so that everyone actually is aware of what goes on. That is actually called transparency. I don't hold back my feelings. I am polite, I believe, when I do so, but I'm also very direct. If I could nominate myself for an award, I would like to be able to say that I too am award-winning, just like doctors that win awards for being the greatest doctor of the year or whatever. So the awards that are won, I would rather be given as nominated from my peers or my neighborhood or my district or whatever, rather than nominating myself. I would hope actually that the work that I've put in might actually matter. But my, I'll leave it again with a question. Why we don't ever get answers to questions from the people that we vote into the positions of sitting on the board? And why does our Board of Education suddenly feel beholden to our superintendent when our superintendent is intended to work for our Board of Education, not the other way around?
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Silver. Any additional comments online in the room? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing of superintendent's contract?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The public hearing is concluded. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Good morning, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the members of the public for their attendance and participation in today's special meeting. Similarly, thank you to our fellow board members and our awesome staff who made this meeting possible at the, at this early morning time. On the topic of this morning's time, there were fifty-six options presented for this meeting to the board members that represented various days of the week and hours of the day. In the interest of transparency, this time slot, seven AM on Friday, October twenty-eighth, was the single slot with the most availability of the board member respondents. We're all represented here today. So I hope that helps to provide clarification. That's how the meeting time was chosen. There was, for the board members, for their behalf, there was an error on these, there was an error with the section numbering that was observed during the public review of the proposed contract. On page eleven, section eleven was numbered section ten, effectively giving to section number tens, which was not the intent. This was brought to the attention of the county superintendent, who agreed that this was not impactful to the terms of the contract, and we were clear to have this morning's meeting on the contract. Similarly, the board's attorney was also made aware, and he similarly, similarly shared no concerns with the correction of the consecutive number. Since the last superintendent contract, which the board approved at a regular meeting on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, there was feedback received from the public with, that the board tried to slip something past the public, holding it during a regular board meeting. This, of course, could not be further from the truth. An alternate option would have been to call for a special meeting with just one agenda item and focus on and file special notices for that meeting, all of which was done for today's special meeting. There was, there was questions, I think, with regards to who negotiated the contract. All board members were present and had input into this contract. This started back in the August timeframe, so there is no urgency or rush. This, this has been ongoing since the summer that this board has been discussing Dr. Mingle's contract. There was a question about tuition reimbursement, I believe. This benefits the district. I mean, that's, that's, I think the board's opinion of that. Specifically legal, it's playing more and more of a role in today's educational system. We have legal counsel on today's call that we're paying for. So having, having someone with a legal education in addition to superintendent background, I think, is extremely beneficial to the district. Those were the themes that I picked up. There was, I think there was also a question with regards to time off. There was no changes to any time off that was, that was in the new contract, and it references all the laws and state statutes that are required for that. With that, discussion? Any board members have any discussion items?
I, I just wanted to reiterate what you said. It's, nothing was done in vacuum. I think all the board members had plenty of options. And like you said, coincidentally, this was the time that suited. My wife is not happy that I had to be here this morning, but this was the time that we chose. So I just just want the community to know. It's, it's nothing was done in vacuum. We all had our choices. This is the time slot that we all chose. So that's all.
Ms. Keller?
So I want to, I did prepare something normally. I don't, I just want to cover off on some Warren Township Schools by the Numbers is what I kind of titled this. So some, I would say in the last six months, there's been some news articles. As recently as the last board meeting, we had some updates on the outcomes of assessments that we've done. Somebody had mentioned this one already. Warren Township Schools is in the top fifty best school districts to teach in New Jersey. It's the top, within the top twenty percent of districts with the best teachers based on our assessments, which is available, the deck that was presented by Mr. Kimick at the last meeting, available on our website. I've averaged this out because I don't think anybody wants to be here any longer than we need to. Our students, on average, are performing twice as well against New Jersey overall in math. Our students in fifth grade science are performing more than twice as well. And in eighth grade, almost three times as well as the average in science. And in terms of belonging, which is a board goal, which has come up a couple of times this morning, based on the Castle results, which also was reviewed at the last board meeting, on average, eighty-five percent of our students agree or strongly agree that they feel like they belong in their classroom and community. These achievements are not the result of a single individual. They are driven by our exemplary teachers and staff, our wonderful administration, our fantastic students, and our engaged families, as you heard from today. However, without Dr. Mingle's exemplary leadership to guide us, we would certainly not be where we are today. I continue to be impressed by several characteristics. His strategic vision and forward-thinking approach, his ability to take that vision and execute it against it with his district leaders, his focus on measurement and data to assess how we are performing, his encouragement of self-reflection for everyone, for the board, for teachers, for students, and for himself, and his unwavering emphasis on employing an empathetic, whole-child perspective. I am less than halfway through my kids' Warren Township School experience. I have a little over five years under my belt, and I have about seven left. The decisions that I make as a board member, I will experience firsthand through my children. My family gets impacted. So I don't take these decisions lightly. And that is why I strongly support this contract, as I can't imagine a better superintendent for our district.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Mr. Bishi, is your hand up?
It is. I finally figured out how to do that on Zoom. Just on the question on the contract, the tuition reimbursement, the, and I don't know if there's a question for Dr. Mingle or Mr. Giacobi, the tuition reimbursement, there's a clawback, right? Where if Dr. Mingle chooses to leave, then he has to reimburse the district for the previous two years' worth of tuition reimbursement. Is that right?
That, that, that is correct. We actually put that in there to benefit the taxpayers of Warren Township so that you're not paying for this education, which is a doctorate in law, and then allowing him to leave. He would pay back two years, and since it's a four-year program, it would be paying back more than half of the tuition, which, being a lawyer, I can tell you, it's an expensive bill. It took me about ten years to pay off my student loans. So that was put in there really for the benefit of the taxpayers of Warren, and that was directed to me by the entire board to make sure that that was in there. So we did put that in there, negotiated that in there.
And that's different than the existing contract. That's
That is correct.
Right. And then the only other item, I have just a nit for you in the line, too. I think we need the word of, but I can email that to you, just a very small
No, no problem. No problem. I just wanted to add, I mean, just so people, I heard a lot of different comments, just to give my perspective. I represent a number of boards of Ed, and they're undergoing searches for superintendents. And frankly, there's not a lot of superintendents out there. It's, it's very, boards are hiring tremendously, finding people, and they're going to interim superintendents, which are retired superintendents. And right now, I have four boards that I represent that are using interim superintendents. So it's, it is typical that contracts are extended because if people are pleased with their superintendent and the progress, it gives some assurance to the taxpayers that there's some stability in their superintendent. And that's, that's been very typical across the state. And again, every one of these contracts, whether extended or no, have to be reviewed, approved by the executive county superintendent, which has them reviewed by a deputy attorney general on behalf of the Department of Education before they can, you, you guys can even vote on them. So this has been reviewed and vetted by the county and the state.
Thank you, Mr. Bishi. Thank you, Mr. Giacobi, as well. Any other for discussion? Moving on to items for board consideration in action.
Motion to approve item C one for board consideration.
Second.
We have a roll call, please. I will call the roll. I just want to note that since the meeting has started, Mr. Desay and Mrs. DiMaggio both arrived, so I'll be including them in a roll call. Maybe we'll wait after the morning announcements or? All right. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Desay?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Absolutely. Yes, with my part. Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Bazee?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. We will now move on to public commentary. This could be on any topic. This is the second public commentary. If, if participants could kindly state their name and address, group affiliation, if appropriate, you will have three minutes to share your comments and feedback with the board. This could be on any topic. Yes, please.
Fullness in their votes today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Mrs. DiMaggio, is your hand up as a public comment?
Um, no.
Okay.
As a board member, sorry, I found it and clicked it too late.
Sorry about that. Any other?
Is it okay if I say something as a board member? I just wanted to go on record to say I'm in class and I need to leave the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate your participation.
Me too. Have a good day. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who wish to provide public commentary? Is there a motion to close public commentary?
Motion.
Sir, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, public commentary, second public commentary has closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the board meeting has concluded. Thank you all for your coming out to Abstentions. The board meeting has concluded. Thank you all for your coming out this morning.
Bye, everybody.